Kevin?
Eric.
Bruce?
Natasha?
Here.
And me? So the first thing we're going to do is approve the minutes from 6:15 to 23. I'll sign from some typographical errors that I can get with Julie on. There wasn't anything really that I found that was wrong. Does anybody have any?
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Roll. Matt?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bruce? Oh, that's right. Natasha will do it here. And I say yes. So tonight, we have a couple of public hearings. So I need a motion to go from our regular meeting to the public hearing for item 23-100 for RL Valley special use approval.
If I decide to recuse myself, probably, do I have, can I not open the public hearing?
That is just in relation to the ZOON. So this one you cannot.
Then I would like to open a public hearing.
For special use 23, or for application 23-100 special use. Can I get a second?
Second.
So I received a planning board letter. The planning board reviewed the application for site plan review and approved the site plan as submitted with the condition the zoning board of appeals approves the special use approval at their meeting tonight. And then we received from the county planning board all in favor action as a local issue. So that was good to see. Is a representative from RL Valley here? If you wouldn't mind providing some information about the project to...
Yeah, sure. My name's Chris Gallo, and I'm a civil engineering associate. And we were in front of you guys last month when you got in front of the planning commission. Scott Raznick with RL Valley is the general manager. I think everybody has the plans, but essentially, it's a, I think everybody's familiar with the site. But it's basically a 3,000 square foot addition to the building and some reconfigured parking spaces. And I know last time we talked about the layout configuration. And if there's any questions, we're happy to address anything from the board or the audience.
Does the board have anything to ask of the, of this project? Ask questions of? I think we addressed it.
We did. We addressed everything last meeting.
Yeah, no, I don't have any questions. I just want to mention that we do need to go through seeker as well.
After we close the public meeting, correct?
Right.
Has the public anything to add or question about this project? Okay. So I have, need a motion to close the public hearing and open up our regular meeting.
I want that motion.
And then we'll work, well, then we'll do the short and fast assessment. Can I get a second? Thank you. Roll. Matt?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yeah.
Natasha?
Yes.
And I say yes. Okay. Tom, are you gonna do the short form or...
Yes, I will. I just don't have the short form checklist.
Here, I'll sit down.
You have the checklist?
Yes, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So attached to the RL Valley application, there is a short environmental assessment form, part one of which began to be completed by the applicant. If everyone has reviewed part one, if anybody has any questions regarding part one, you can address those at this time. And it's pretty fairly self-explanatory what's going on. But if there are no questions, then we can proceed on to part two, which I'll, again, will read all the bullet points on part two. And then if we feel we need to address any individual one, then we can go back and discuss that. So under part two, again, which is our responsibility to complete, number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict when the adopted land use plan is zoning regulation? Number two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? Number three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Number four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? Number five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? Number six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Number seven, will the proposed action impact existing A, public-private water supplies? B, public-private wastewater treatment utilities? Number eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? Number nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? For example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? Number 10, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? And number 11, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources, to human health? So just, you know, as the applicant has already provided, basically, they're expanding an existing facility on Spiegel Drive. They've laid out their plans. One of the plans in expanding the building is hoping to eliminate, I think, the traffic flow which previously existed, which I think was an issue. And then expanding the gas canopy itself. So does anybody feel that this particular project as proposed would have an impact on any of the bullet points that I just identified?
No, I don't. No.
Then with those comments being made, a motion can be made to have what's called a negative declaration issued to this project, meaning there's no negative environmental impact.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Oh, yeah.
Need motion, yes.
Matt? Kevin?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Natasha?
Yes.
And I say yes.
Seeker has been completed.
So we have approved the project for your... Right?
No. There's been no vote on the project. We had voted on seeker just now.
Oh, sorry about that. So I need a motion to approve this project or deny it.
I'll make a motion. Will you approve it?
I'll second. Okay. Roll call. Matt? Kevin?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Natasha?
Yes.
And I say yes. So now...
So there you go.
So you are approved. To answer your question, I think you can basically come in and see Mr. Mertat, apply for your building permits.
Yeah.
See, do they have the building permit?
No, yeah, no, I just got your email. No, that's perfect. Yeah, we already had to fill out, so.
Okay.
And I emailed Julie a little bit earlier. So we'll get that right over ASAP.
Okay.
And whatever else we need, we'll be good to go.
Good.
Issues on the back too. Okay, yeah, excellent.
I'll say that.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Have a good night.
I meant to email you back, but I didn't get a chance to.
No problem. That was perfect. Thank you guys. Have a nice night.
You too.
Good luck.
All right. So moving forward, our second public hearing is for application 23003 from Jack Goodman, Solar Power Network special use approval. So I need a motion to go from our regular meeting to the public hearing for this project.
So this is the part where now I will formally recuse myself.
Okay. Can't listen to them. Yeah. And Mr. Jetro, who's an alternate member, can come up and take his spot to sit on this application.
Okay. Come on up, Mickey.
See, that's for last.
You can act like you have your map table. All right. So I need a motion to go from our regular meeting to a special, to the public hearing for application 23003 from Jack Goodman, Solar Power Network special use approval.
I'll make that motion.
Any second?
Second.
Okay. So we reviewed, we did go over this. I did get something back from the county planning board. There was, they, there were six in favor and one not in favor of the action here. With, they sent a response, and I'll read that. Referral 74-23, Town of Champlain Zoning Board of Appeals, applicant Solar Power Network, Jack Goodman, site plan review and special permit at Hayford Road. Project description, solar project development of three separate community solar farms. The Clinton County Planning Board at its July 5, 2023 meeting voted 6 to 1 to determine this request a local issue, but with the following comments issued to the town. The town is encouraged to ensure that the developer is taking steps to ensure that the habitat of the identified endangered threatened animal species, the upland sandpiper, is preserved. To verify that the developers' plans for screening are sufficient to prevent negative aesthetic impact on neighbors as concerns are raised by the public. And review the developers' plans for decommissioning to ensure that there is a plan for removal and disposal of solar equipment at the end of its useful life. Signed by Thomas LeWong, our chairperson. So they had some concerns that they felt should be addressed, and I, we will probably get upon that as the meeting continues. Can the people for the project that are here, please come up and...
I'll be there. Take a minute.
Please provide some insight into the project for us.
Okay. Let's have a third visit before you for the proposed Solar Power Networks Community Solar Project located in the southwest corner of Prospect Street and Hayford Road. The parcel, existing approximately 120 acre lot. And what we're proposing is to create, there's subdivided out three lots from the 120 acres. Lots 1, 2, and 3 here on the north side of the prospect. Each block would then house a community solar development. Lot 1 would only have approximately half a megawatt lot. 2 and 3 would each have approximately five megawatts. What we've done with the project, as we talked last time, is try to utilize the portion of the land that has the younger growth of the scrub brush trees on it and maintain the natural heavily wooded or older growth area to the south. And I think, you know, this picture might have been circulated at the last meeting. I have other copies. But that's aerial photography back from the, you know, mid-'90s, late-'90s that kind of show that, you know, the portion that we're looking to develop was, you know, open land and not the suddenly portion of, obviously, the dense green, you know, the forest area. So we have gone out, you know, modeled this based upon the other projects that we've, you know, had before you and the other solar developments that you've had within the town. We've also looked at the wetlands. We have mapped out. There is an existing drainage dish along the east side of the property that's associated with an army core wetlands. The project has been designed to completely avoid that. So there's no impacts to that. There were some concerns raised during the public hearing at the planning board a couple of weeks ago, and then also at the county planning board, that obviously, we need to do the seeker environment map. You know, it does identify the sandpiper as a friend or endangered species that is known to inhabit the area. As discussed at the last meeting, you know, that species roofs and habitats, low-lying grasslands, are cultivated fields and not really wooded areas as this project currently is. To elaborate and give some additional, so the biologist who did the wildlands also did the species. He's provided a memo here, I would submit for the record, that basically identifies that during the investigation, none of the species were present and that the proposed site is not the type of habitat that that species utilizes. Therefore, in their opinion, in our opinion, that the project would have no effect on that species, excuse me, whatsoever. That really, you know, they're more likely to be in the older fields that surround the property, or when we're done, actually, when there is grasslands available for them. But as I said, now, we do not be impacting any of their habitat. You know, there are also some concerns from the neighbors as far as, you know, proximities and, you know, where everything is. And I mentioned, on the south side, we are leaving, you know, the wooded area alone. So there's a, you know, 600-foot of woods on the south side that would remain. And then from the actual subdivision line for the arrays, you know, we're 200 feet from the residence off of Hayford Road.
I'll stay out.
And then in addition to that, you know, the arrays themselves are positioned even further off of the property line such that, you know, really, you know, we have well exceeded all of the requirements of the zoning ordinance for set packs along Hayford Road prospect and obviously the surrounding areas. So we've submitted, you know, throughout this process, a lot of documents as far as the draft decommissioning, the narratives, et cetera, et cetera. So obviously, I'm sure you've read it, we've been through this before, but if you have any additional questions, I'd love to answer them or if the public has comments that we can provide additional information for, we're more than happy to.
Does the board have any questions?
I, just a quick question, Erin. Has the project been modified since the last time we were here? Because I, I thought I heard that at least the portion that's close to joining, I can't think of the majority of the golf course roads ever, that, that's been modified somewhat or had since the last time?
The only thing that's been modified was the comments that I think you identified in our last submission that we have numbering wrong on the lots, so the 1, 2, and 3. And we've also mapped the wetlands on this to show that they are outside of any of the proposed arrays. But the development is still the same as far as the 2, 5 megawatt facilities and the one smaller one. Like I said, the boundary line of the solar parcel is, you know, 200 feet off of any existing residential lot line and toward the Hayford Road. And then obviously, our arrays are then inset from that, another, you know, 150 feet beyond that point.
Has this been subdivided yet?
No, it hasn't. So we're right, as far as the project and where we stand, you know, it's three separate solar arrays on three separate parcels, subdivided out of parent parcel. But in order for any portion of the project to move forward, we have to seeker first. So the seeker process, you know, not to segment any portion of it, the seeker review is the entire thing. It's the subdivision and the site development. So really, at this point, you know, we've been at the county, so, we're going wrong. The planning board deemed the application complete. This board deemed it complete. Both sent it to the county. The county has brought a local issue to come back to you. We've met with the planning boards two weeks ago. They held the public hearing, but they could not officially approve the project because seeker wasn't done. So you were actually head of, like, lead agent when we first started this several months ago. So our next step is to get through the seeker process, which then allow the boards to then move forward.
Any other questions, Tom, the board? Okay. So we'll have the public be able to ask questions of the project. I'm going to set a timer because we don't want to, you know, we want to try and make, make our points and then keep moving on. So let me get my timer out here. Okay, so I think I thought maybe 10 minutes would be hopefully more than enough for people to make their point. So is there anybody that would like to speak and ask questions of this project? Your name, please?
I would just like to speak to his...
Your name, please?
Oh, Cindy Manette, sorry.
Thank you.
His reference to only the upland sandpiper. I would like to point out that the DEC has specifically stated concerns over bats in this particular area, specifically the Indiana bat. Just stare with me here. The Indiana bat, the long-eared, northern long-eared bat, and there's a tri-collared bat. These are on the endangered list from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Department. And the DEC was specifically concerned about those. They are in the Champlain area. The upland sandpiper is not the only bird that is of concern. I would like to submit this list to you that came specifically from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, as we've been referenced to the micro bird agreement treaty act and the amendment. There are specific permits and studies that need to be done prior to anything else. And I didn't see anywhere on the seeker form where there was any indication that any studies with respect to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Department had been done.
Thank you for this.
You're welcome. Obviously, some of those animals are not here, like wolf and stuff like that. Those are just animals that I pulled off.
And this was obtained, I don't see...
U.S. Fish and Wildlife, right off their website. And the Migratory Bird Act is also on their website along with their amendment to that. The Migratory Bird Act was created in 2020, and the amendment was 2021. And I can provide you with some of it.
Do you have any questions in regards to the project of the developer?
We have a lot of questions, but other people have stuff to say too. I don't want to hog up the whole 10 minutes.
You have two more minutes.
Well, that's all right. We'll let other people talk.
Okay. Anybody want to look at this?
Sure.
All right. Who else would like to say something regarding the project?
I would.
Oh, let's start in the back.
Okay.
Get a hand up, quick. Your name, sir?
Robert Chapman. I'm sure people are going to make a lot of points as to why this shouldn't happen. But I like to look at it from a common sense point of view. I don't think anybody can argue that it hasn't been a very unusual summer. However, it seems to be becoming more usual as we go along. Now, you can debate whether climate change is due to mankind or some other reason, but it's pretty hard to argue that it isn't happening. And we need to do everything we can to at least mitigate this situation. It just doesn't make common sense to deforest an area to put up so-called green energy, which I'm all for. But why do we have to cut forests when we have so many open areas that this can be done in? And from that point of view, I'll just leave it at that. It just doesn't make sense.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, yes, you wanted to say something next? Your name, please?
Mary Ann Bernard. I have a prepared statement that I think most of you have already received in a packet that my sister and I put together. But for the sake of the rest of the folks that are here, I'd like to quickly read that, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
It should be fine.
It's addressed to the zoning board members. It says, "Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Bernard. My husband Gary and I live on the Hayford Road, directly adjacent to the Arthur Bedard estate. The 100-plus acre forest is the proposed site of a large-scale solar farm in a zoned residential. Gary and I recently found out about the proposed project and have since then been following the process closely. We attended the Clinton County Planning Board meeting on July 5. The Clinton County Board was concerned that approving a large solar farm in residentially zoned areas would set a dangerous precedent. They neither approved nor disapproved the project. Instead, they decided 6 to 1 to deem it a local issue and essentially kicked the can down the road to you. The following evening, July 6, we attended the Town of Champlain Planning Board meeting at the town office. They listened to our concerns, and many even stayed beyond the meeting to speak with us. They had many questions. Tonight, we appear before you, the Champlain Town Zoning Board. You will be looking at a state environmental quality review report, a report that will guide you in determining whether this proposed project will have a serious environmental impact as well as other negative impacts on the area. It is our contention that it most certainly will. You have a packet prepared by my sister Cindy Manette and from me showing pictures and articles addressing some of our concerns. We have more for you tonight. We have another very grave concern. The primary document you will use is riddled with inaccuracies. The report consists of two parts. Part one was prepared by representatives of the solar company. It consists of a series of yes or no questions. If the answer is marked yes, more questions need to be answered. If the question is marked no, questions can be skipped. Part one of this document then populates part two of the document that you will use to make your decision. We spent several hours, actually many hours, and went through this document, item by item, with a fine-tooth comb, viewing through the lens of the Hayford Road property. The most critical part that we want to say is this. Many of the part one questions are inaccurately marked no, thus enabling some particularly important follow-up questions, important to understanding the impact of this project upon the area, to be skipped over by the solar company. These part one inaccuracies make the part two document also terribly flawed. We have included a copy of the part one issues. Most of you should have that. There are many, and every single section of the part two that you will use to make your decision is therefore flawed. We believe there will be serious impact to the environment, to the residents of the Hayford Road, to the users of the Harry McManus bike path, and to the nature of our town. Equally important, this solar project will set a dangerous precedent in Champlain as well as Clinton County regarding large solar projects in residential areas. There are seven proposed between 9B, the Town of Champlain, Route 276, and the Village of Rouses Point. This is roughly a three-mile by three-mile area. This has to stop. You have the power to do it. I would also like to submit, this is from the 117th Congress First Session, HR 4833. Did you submit that already?
No, I have this for you. It's, it's the amendment and the actual Migratory Bird Act.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, no. If you've got a copy, let her have it.
Thank you.
So just, just to give you an idea, I went through, and several people have gone through. This is, this is the part one. I just highlighted, this is, this is for everybody to see. This is the part one. There are mistakes or questionable areas on every single page of this, all over the place. There are questions that were asked, and a different answer was given. For example, let me see if I can find one in particular. There was one that was absolutely glaring. The question was asked, oh, this is it. This is in D1. What is the general nature of the proposed action? Example, residential, industrial, commercial, recreational. If mixed, include all the components. Parcel is currently undeveloped woodlands. The character of the surrounding properties is vacant woods, agricultural fields, solar farm, or golf course. What is the nature of the proposed action? It's a solar farm, not a description of the land. I mean, all through this document, there are things missing. There are things that are wrong. There are contradictions. I mean, I could, I could go through, we'd be here till midnight if I went through every single one of them. But if I had to sum it up in just one statement, what I would say is, the one thing that has been disregarded by this solar company over and over and over again in all of these documents is the living things. That would be the residents of the Hayford Road. That would be the animals that live in this woods. Now, he just showed you a picture from 30 years ago when this was a field. 30 years, okay? Go walk the property now. It's a forest. It is not an empty field. Go take a ride, walk through there. I've sent you pictures. I have thousands of pictures from the 40 years that we've lived there of, the, the non-applicable is the way they put it. One of the questions was, how does this, you know, affect the nature of what's, what's in that woods? Not applicable is what they put. My response was, oh, my God. I brought out my albums. I can't tell you the things that walk out of that woods twice a day. So all the living things, the people on the Hayford Road, the people on the bike path, the animals in the woods, the birds that will fly over this, nothing. The questions that they conveniently answered no to and skipped over all pertain to the living things. Well, geez. What does that mean? I, I think you guys need to take a really close look at this because the seeker that you're going to be looking at, part one is flawed. It dovetails into part two. Both flawed. Both inaccurate. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Wow.
I was a teacher. I know all about this.
All right. Thank you, thank you again. Is there anybody else who would like to state something for the record? Yes, sir. Your name?
Tom Batha from Rouses Point. I think everyone knows me.
Yeah, thank you.
I wasn't really paying close attention to these solar farms until they just started popping up like weeds all over the place. I look at them as akin to a junkyard or other, some other blight. You come in, big fields of plastic. Environmentally disastrous. Heavy metals, plastic, non-biodegradable. And for what? It's not green energy that we're going to use It's not green energy that we're going to use because we already 100% green energy because we use hydroelectric from Niagara Falls exclusively all around here. They get built for nuclear, but it's all hydro. Where's this power going then? It's going into the grid for New York City. Who's making the money? People that don't live here. We're getting virtually no property tax from this project, from what I understand, no jobs from this at all other than when they install it and they'll use probably non-local workers, but that doesn't matter. It's a temporary thing. You put it in, they're gone. We're going to come in, I understand there's one proposed on Route 11 by the overpass. Is that correct?
Across from Sharp.
Yeah, across from Sharp on the left-hand side as you go in. That's real nice to look. Right now, we're looking at nice green cornfields. Future development possibly down the road. You put this sea of plastic in there, and it's done. It not only looks bad, it looks repulsive to me, but it takes our future away. We have no place to grow when they go and cherry pick all these places all around and put these big plastic arrays in to make power for someone else. I think that I can see no benefit whatsoever to these solar fields. You get lithium, cadmium, plastic. It's a mess. I would urge the zoning board to take whatever steps you possibly can to stop this because this is wrong. This is people from far away taking advantage of us, taking advantage of our lax rules such as they are because they're totally adequate for our use, but they're not, they don't stand up very well against big city people with a lot of money to hire engineers and developers and bankers and everything else. I mean, just look at what they said about the, they hired a biologist, and he said, these birds, we didn't look at them up here, but he said, "They probably don't live there. They probably live over here where you're not building." What kind of an answer is that, you know? I've been up the part that the Bernards are talking about. It's all full of turkeys and deer, and every kind of game you can think of is wandering around up there. You're going to cut that all down? And then, what happens 25 years from now? Well, these things all be done, probably done by then, and who knows what's going to happen then. But where's our growth between now and then? If we want to put some development along Route 11, it's all taken up by solar farms that, like I say, have, I can't think of a single positive value that a solar farm has for anybody. I mean, they're fine if you're in some remote area of the country that doesn't produce any kind of energy at all and has to come out of nowhere and make some electricity. But we don't have that problem here. In fact, we don't have that problem anyplace in New York State. These windmills out here in Shattigate, all that electricity goes to Vermont, every bit of it. They put the big cable onto the lake three years ago, four years ago, all goes to them because we don't need it. We have hydro up here. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in regards to this project? Yes, your name?
I'm Tia LaFaye, and I'm a medical technologist, and I'm here because I have concerns regarding, as they said, the living here. Because you're putting a huge, you're talking about putting a huge energy, solar panel, they have to store all that energy, put everything around. There is a great deal, even with the chemicals, you're putting this very close to a high school and middle school with children and in a residential area. I can tell you right now, chemicals, even just energy itself, has effects on people if exposed long-term. And this sounds like a long-term project. I want to know, has there been any type of research or anything done to look into how this could affect the people here? And just being in the residential area that it is and so close to our children, what steps are you guys taking? What model, what are you using to protect, to make sure nothing leaks out or nothing affects negatively? I mean, even, we've heard of wind turbine syndrome. I mean, solar power is, it's basically radiation we're collecting. It's solar energy. We're going to put a huge amount of that in one spot, and it's all going to be collecting down. They have to store it. They have to channel. And we're putting it right by a high school and middle school and in a residential area. I want to know, because I do know, these things do have effects and can build up in the system. I mean, my whole job is being in the lab, testing for metals, looking at, looking at all this stuff. I want to know what they're planning models of machinery in that they're going to be using so we can know exactly how secure and how this is all being managed so it doesn't affect us. Not just the wildlife, but us, ourselves, and those around the school because it's a very, it's scary to think of how, because I know with wind turbine, there is a lot of syndrome. There is a lot of health issues that were associated with that. And that is affecting Malone and they're miles out from Malone. We're putting this right in the, by our school, right in the middle of the two towns. I want to know ahead of time, what's the long-term, what could be, we're looking at here?
Thank you very much.
Can you answer that question, Erin?
Yeah, I was just going to say, do you have any answer for those?
Well, I also want to continue the public hearing, then we can address.
All right. Is there anybody else who would like to address this project? Yes, sir?
Yes.
Thomas LaFaye. I only dropped the end 7/84 here, though. I just found out about this project, okay, to my neighbors, not even two weeks ago. And I just don't understand why that's one of the things. One thing I want to point out right off the bat, he brought, showed you a map 30-plus years ago. I've been thinking about selling my property, and I had to have surgery done and all this stuff. I had an appraiser come in. And actually, I needed a leak field. And anything to, I had to have a study done. And any information that I had, if it wasn't two years old or newer, it couldn't be used. But he's bringing a map in, an oversight thing. It's over 30 years old. What you see there is no longer there. It's different, okay? And if he's going off that 30-year map on here, it's different. I would like to know, was the state involved in any type of environmental impact study? Okay? If we're going by old information and we start digging around there, the wetlands that are there, I think they may be affected, maybe something to look at. So, has the state been involved in this? Have they done their part? And the walking trail was also built up. What a, that's beautiful. You guys did an awesome job. The town you guys went through, you blacktopped it. A park right there, you know, I'm amazed with that. I was impressed. Now, we're surrounded with them, with all this electrical stuff. It just doesn't make sense to me, you know? It was, I use it during the summertime. I'll walk up to six miles a day on it. And I enjoy the nature, and I don't want to look at the, I don't want to look at the electrical stuff. And that being said, I don't know if the study, I haven't even talked to my doctor about this yet, but I do have a medical condition. And I live in the area. I got to avoid electricity, voltage, welders, stuff like that. I can't be around this stuff, okay? The panels, I don't know yet, but I'm going to research it some more. So, now that I found out about it, because I live here. Actually, when I bought my home, we looked at a place in deep in the town and the home we have now. And we bought it here because there was power lines next to the home, and I was told to avoid them. So, I just want to put that out there, and just something to think about, you know? And it does really make me nervous, a picture that came out that's over 30 years old, showing what it was years ago. It just doesn't cut it with me. It should be all new information. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Your name?
Colin Pickerskill, Hayford Road.
Can you say that again?
Colin Pickerskill.
Pickerskill, thank you.
Hayford Road. Something was said about the wetlands during this gentleman's presentation. Unless I'm wrong, Gary, you'll correct me. Everything drains west to east in that parcel of land. Crosses Hayford Road, runs through the golf course, ends up in Lake Champlain. With the destruction they're going to do to the land west of what they were talking about, what's that going to do to the sediment coming through the wetlands? Is it going to plug up the current stream that's running through there? I agree with Mr. Batha. There's absolutely no benefit to anybody in this town or county when it comes to what they're doing. And as for, it just bothers my mind if anybody would even be considering this. And I don't believe a thing that man said.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to voice their concerns?
Can I just add one more thing?
Sure.
With respect to my speaking to basically the birds, these solar farms have been identified in hundreds of studies, and I did provide all of you guys with some of the research on that. They refer to them as electromagnetic fields, and if you don't know what an electromagnetic field does to a migrating bird, one of the major impacts is what they refer to as lake effect, whereas a migrating bird will look down and they will see, a solar farm view it as a body of water. Hundreds of thousands of birds have already died as a result of this lake effect coming from solar farms. This area here, Champlain, the Hayford Road, dead center of the Atlantic Flyway, one of the four major flyways for migrating birds, specifically Canada geese and snow geese, which are on your list as federally protected birds. I mean, these things are terrible. That's the absolute worst location to have that. I mean, it's just enough things, things aren't being considered here. You're not taking into consideration anything but his inaccuracies and lies. And it is, it's completely wrong. It's completely wrong.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else that would like to voice?
I'd also like to make a point in reference to the trees that I had commented on before.
You, Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Has anyone looked around at the number of trees that are dying or already dead in this area? The beetles are destroying a lot of the trees. And in fact, I think people like Richard's here are going to make a fortune in the future here because they're dying all over the place. I just can't fathom cutting out a bunch of trees when we're already faced with a bunch of trees that are dying. And we all know that these are items that help to protect our environment.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to say something?
I know I've used up my 10 minutes, but there's one other, two other things, and I will be quick, I promise. We have, we just started this a couple days ago, okay? Almost everybody that we talked to, with the exception of maybe one, two people, nobody knew about this and were happy to sign this. They're not opposed to solar. They're opposed to solar in the middle of our neighborhoods, okay? So, they signed this. This is all people from the area. If we had had more time, we could have had prob, I can't even imagine how many signatures we could have had. We just didn't have enough bodies to go around. Yes, okay. It says, "The Town of Champlain recently enacted amendments to Chapter 130 zoning law. These amendments now allow large-scale solar farms to be constructed in residentially-zoned areas. There are plans for potentially seven. We are petitioning the Town of Champlain Zoning Board to halt large-scale solar farm development in residential areas." Okay?
That's your petition that?
That's the petition I would like to submit.
Okay.
There's that. The other thing that I want you to consider, when Gary bought our property, it was owned by George Bedard, father of Arthur Bedard. And he owned a huge tract of land. After his death, of course, it was divided up among his children, and the property in question, including ours, went to his son, well, no, we owned it at the time, but the rest of it around us went to Art. And part of the property that was owned and that is very close to this is, we call it the Dewey Tavern. It's at the crossroads right by the school. I think most locals know what I'm talking about. There used to be an historic plaque right in front of Dewey Tavern. I've stopped and read it. That has mysteriously disappeared. I don't know where that plaque is. That needs to be looked at because that's a designated site. Now, why do I mention it? Well, because somewhere in that field, old George had a graveyard from the War of 1812. There were bodies and gravestones that were buried. And according to Art, his father had him and his siblings go around and collect the gravestones and remove them so that the graves didn't show anymore, so he didn't have to plow around them. Point being, somewhere on that property, which may be in the 30-year-old field you're talking about, there are bodies buried. So, this project starts digging up, and we happen to unearth some 1812 bodies, then one. I'm just throwing that out there because nobody knows where those graves are. And all of the Bedard children now are either dead, the ones that would know, or they're 95-plus years old and failing in health and are in nursing homes or whatnot. So, that is, that's a huge historic concern, I think. Okay, I will be quiet.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else that would like to voice a concern?
She brought up the graveyard. You've heard lots about that. And years ago, you know, there was talk about doing the Bob Ben Park there and had something to do with the cemetery because it was there. And the Bedard family actually donated land for that. It was moved. And I just feel that, you know, we're looking to do this with the fields, doing the energy. We have, look at the potential for that area. Like Tia said, we have the school there, you know, we have a park. So, it's something we really should look at, so.
Thank you. Our last one's for, yes, Calvin?
Tellin' the story, and I'd like to address the historic part here, Calvin Castine. The signs, as far as I know, are on the east side of that house. If you look going up toward Canada, look at the side of the house, there are two historic signs on there.
I saw those.
So, those are the ones that were on the lawn.
We're talking about?
These are big signs. These are the big signs that were in front of the house. They got moved to the side of the house. Originally, the property that we were looking at for Bob Ben Park was to the east of Louis's house, Dewey Tavern. We couldn't get the financing to buy it, so we'd made down payments. Louis agreed to give us the parcel that is now Bob Ben Park for what we had paid him. He said, "I thought this would be more important because that's where the bodies from the Dewey family are supposedly buried." So, we're looking at the Bob Ben Park, not down the Prospect Hill Road for the burial site. So, that's, we've done surveys there. We can't find the bodies. The stones, as far as I know, some of the stones that were moved were brought to Wedwood Cemetery. So, they weren't just thrown on the wall. But where the bodies are, Louis didn't know, so we don't know. They were in that, they're in the Bob Ben Park area.
The park?
Yeah.
Okay.
Have they considered a heat-type determination? They did the heat?
Oh, yeah. We had the guy from Coopersville that was, forget his name right now, but he's living Romeo Bechard's house there. And he had, he worked for the college, and he did all the beeping and the testing.
But they never found the bodies?
Couldn't locate them, no.
So, is there any other questions in regards to this project that you want to have a concern about? Do you, yes, Matt?
I just have some supplementary information. One concern I did have was what you had mentioned about the trees. Now, one of the questions involves storm runoff. With that many trees on land that is moderately well-drained to poorly drained, I'd imagine that taking out trees that absorb a lot of that moisture and also hold in sediment would probably not be good for the wetlands. Additionally, I wanted to ask, did you consult with any archaeological unit from the Historic Preservation Office? Or did you just use Chris? The online tool or like the map?
Answer that again?
Well, the reason I ask is because when I went on to Chris and found the area around Dewey, was it Dewey Tavern? And also, there is archaeological-sensitive areas along Lake Champlain. One thing, when you turn on that layer to see that sensitive area, it says you, the tool is not meant or it doesn't tell you that you have consulted by law on archaeological, historical, or sensitive areas. It just gives you... It just gives you a buffer, an idea. So to me, it seems like if there are two archaeologically sensitive areas very close to this area, you'd want to make sure that you have an archaeological unit from the Historic Preservation Office to do a survey to make sure that this is not an archaeologically sensitive area. Another thing is there aren't just endangered animals, but it's also endangered, um, plants and trees. Um, a good example is, uh, the, the butternut tree. That is an endangered, uh, tree that has actually been sighted around here and I have seen examples of it in the area. You do? So if they haven't done a full survey with the DEC regarding endangered plants and animals, then there's a potential that taking out 40 acres of trees could result in certain threatened or endangered, uh, plant species. I have some documents to submit, but those are my major concerns.
Okay. Thank you. Is that your name?
Eric Richard, 24 Church, Ross's Point. The oversight map, um, you know, 30 years ago, you know, today there is a huge beaver pond to the north, which is probably eight, 10 acres. And that all drains through this proposed area. And there is a new ditch that was dug by, um, Bedard, Randy Bedard. And the culvert was through there by the town to actually take the overflow from the dam, from the beavers, and it runs through here. And the wetland survey that they're currently using may be very well outdated where it's, it's, it's not dated. You know, we're, we're talking a 30-year plan and, the deforestation, there is a lot of tamarack and other species where they are rare. And the wildlife, there's a lot of wildlife, you know, which would be funneled, so. Not opposed to solar, um, it's just, it is a rough location. Um, and if it was in a desert, if it was on unusable ledge somewhere that really had no purpose, uh, you know, I could understand it better. That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Dare I say one more thing? I, I just, I just quickly went online to look up this company and basically they've been in existence not even seven years. It'll be seven years, September 9th, that they've been in existence and they're mostly industrial commercial type solar. Um, they're young. This, this is a new branch for them. They're experimenting. They don't know what they're doing. And they found a place where for some god-awful reason, they changed the zoning law during the middle of a pandemic when nobody was going to meetings and paying attention. And that's going to affect, I guarantee you that.
Okay, let's let her, are you finished?
Almost. So my point is, there's an awful lot wrong here and I'm just, I'm begging you people, really, do the right thing.
You really noted. Okay, thank you.
You know, I know, like, people may call and contact these people for saying, "Hey, I have land. I'd like to put a solar farm on it and receive an income." And yet, we do have a lot of unusable land where landfills were capped. Uh, there was pre-existing landfills back in the 20s, 30s, 40s, 50s, and the land is total garbage. You know, those are the sites that I wouldn't mind seeing this on, where some young individual looks at a piece of land and they say, "Look at that. It's beautiful. I want to build my home here." And they come from out of state or they come from out of town or they, they grew up here, but they just don't know that they're purchasing a piece of contaminated land that is going to kill them. And they want to build their future on it. Well, if, you know, as they, you know, those are places that need to be looked at for construction of these things and not usable land that's isn't, you know, it's unmolested, you know? And take something that's already destroyed and continue the path of destruction. That's all.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Colin Pickles Gillian, I have another comment basically raised by this gentleman and I'm grateful that you did it. Um, this is a very historical area, if you want to look at it that way. It was the north-south route everybody used at one point in time before we had roads. We have no idea what exists on any of our land around here. And I'll bring up, how many people here are familiar with the drive to Swans? You go through Alberg, you turn left at the flashing light, you drive through and there's another bridge to go over. They had to change the road in that area when they put that bridge in, that new bridge in, because right there on the curve, right next to the lake, they discovered a, an Indian village dated from the early 1600s. We have no idea what's under the ground under here. And yet, we're perfectly willing to blindly allow someone to come in, has no benefit to us, and potentially destroy an archaeological site. So he's right. I don't believe there's any been any archaeological study studied in this area.
Thank you. Uh, let's see here. Okay, has anybody other than the people that have already spoken? I know. I'm just making sure everybody has their voice before we carry on. Is there anybody else that has not, has not spoken that would like to say something in regards to this project? Okay.
So, yes, Tom? I feel compelled just to talk to the, to the group in general because our solar law has been referenced. So I, I need, for us to town board, I want to defend, we did not put a solar law in place during the pandemic purposely. There was public hearings. It was not done for them to try to do it quietly and sneak it in. We're not inviting solar in. Solar was here prior. There was several applications that came across as more coming. And one of them is that Route 11 project that still went in, even though we pushed it back an extra 300 feet. The law was put in place to try to protect the areas around these solar farms, such as your residential areas. I'm not disagreeing with what you're doing here, not disagreeing with some of your thoughts. That's why it shouldn't be there. Um, however, I've always thought houses would be beautiful in this piece of property. If we were building houses, we wouldn't be talking about the birds and the trees as much because the same thing would happen. Irregardless, I just want to say that solar law was done to put guidelines in. We spent a lot of money on it. We held off these solar companies. One still came back, even though it got pushed back 300 feet from Route 11, they still came in. So we did the best we could. I also want to add that we hear you. We understand. And the board is going to look at the law, it won't be the zoning board that has to set the laws, it's the town board.
I know that.
We will consider amending it in some way to protect further. But I want you to know, we did this with your best interests at heart. And if we didn't do it perfect, we will just continue to keep working on it. Thank you.
Can I, can I respond to that? One, one, if this, if this is in our best interest?
Well, you know, we're not here, we're here to have debate between, with, with respect to the, the solar code. Comments about the project, fine. But if you have some issues with respect to the solar law, that's certainly take it up with the town board. You know?
I will.
It, it's, it's more to put points, your point forward regarding this project to this board. That's, that's a different discussion.
Okay.
It will be had.
Okay, is there anybody else, um, that would like to speak in regards to, um? Yes, Matt?
Um, so I'm just going to give you these. One of them is from the DEC. This is sightings of endangered threatened species in these areas. I just want to direct you to these two sites. So along this path, given that there's something here and here, it makes sense that there'll be something possibly. And then these are just references. Those aren't interesting.
So this is saying that these places don't?
Those have sightings of the, and there's a list here of some of them. So these are just for, because this is on listed protected, um, plants and animal species. And then from the DEC, and this is rare plants, watch this. This is the archaeological sensitive areas of one share that's, uh, have.
All the info?
And then this is where, that's a great area. And then about here would be where we have this.
Sure.
And then this is the, uh, thing that pops up when you go through.
Oh, okay. So which, to describe that?
To, well, to describe that you need to actually consult the archaeological unit and not just use the tool to define where archaeological sensitive areas is. Okay. Um, lastly, I just want to note that, um, by the DEC, when they say, when they fill out the, um, that auto-DF-generated form, when they talk about endangered or threatened species, um, they say that it's not always the case that they find animals there in their database. And so what they'll do sometimes is they will, um, reference animals that have been sighted nearby or they will cite animals that are within a similar habitat. So that means that even though one animal was sighted, um, in their form for a potentially endangered species, that might just mean that there was no study or survey ever done on the site to provide information on those species. So not, what I've found is a lot of the forms, a lot of the things that get auto-generated are sometimes incomplete because they don't always have all the data.
Support it.
Exactly.
Gotcha.
So.
Thank you. Yes, sir. And then I would like to have Aaron respond to some of the concerns so that we don't forget and then we can, you know, take our back and forth here.
Robert Chapman. Just want to expand on Richard's comment here a little bit. I think it sounds like all of us are against solar energy and I suspect that many of us are not. Myself, I am not. We have a need to have resources for energy in a variety of ways. But let's be judicious in where, how we go about doing this. Um, and I think it's been pointed out before, there are areas like the site that Wyeth Laboratories had or the mall that's here in Champlain that was abandoned years ago. There are many areas, and I know when they first started talking about solar energy, they said, "Oh, this is going to be great stuff. We can put it on rooftops. We can put it on parking garages." Well, that hasn't proved to be very practical, apparently. And now we're at a point where we're going to cut down forests to do this. Um, I just think there are so many areas that are better to be utilized for this type of a situation.
Okay, thank you. Now, before we, I'd like to make sure that we cover all the questions that should be answered, Aaron. I, I, I might have forgotten some myself, so hopefully somebody's been.
That's something I'm sure we'll be, we point out. Uh, I mean, just in general, you know, New York State has established legislative, the people who wrote in the office have established a guideline of where they want to see New York State as far as percentage of renewable energy rights for a deadline. So obviously, that's what sparked, obviously, the solar industry. Uh, the town started to see applications several years ago and they said, "Wait a minute. We need to state, pump the brakes, adopt regulations." Um, we actually had another application for the same developer up on 276. Uh, and that project was put on hold in order for the town to go through and adopt the local law. We did not participate in the adoption of law. We didn't create the law. We waited for the town to come through and establish guidelines. We, once that was done, we put an application for 276. The one comment was made, you know, utilizing unusable land. You know, that was actually the old landfill site. Uh, some of you may be from around just south of the border. Uh, so we went with that and that was the Bedard property also. Uh, Bedards then approached us and said, "Hey, we have, you know, additional lands if you'd like to do additional projects." And again, we looked at what the current law states. So the town established a law that says where we can put them. You know, obviously, you know, the concern of habitat, believe it or not, right, open fields are less desirable because they are the habitat for the dated birds. Uh, when you look at the 30-year-old picture, the 30-year-old picture really is in the secret application and when you look at mature for forest, that the growth on the north half where the property is being developed is not immature for forest. It is wooded. I'm not going to deny that. But it's not immature for us and the applicant took that to heart because there were some sketches that looked at a larger development on the site, but they felt they didn't want to cut down the mature forest that was on the south half of the project. So that's why we've modified it to what you see here. There are no, some sites and some projects for solar actually do have battery components to it. These do not. There are no batteries. There's no onsite storage. So basically, it's generating power, putting it into the grid. And community solar is developed such that, and the guidelines are created so that the existing network with, you know, minor modifications, basically, the lines on the street can handle that increase in power. So we talk about the EMF generation. It's no greater than what you have on your existing power lines running down the street. So we don't have large substations, things like that. You know, I am personally not aware of a study for EMF for solar. I have seen several studies. I've also done wind projects and the effects of wind and the flutter, et cetera, and the birds, et cetera. So I have seen those studies. But again, I have not seen that negative EMF from solar. So if there is, it'd be something new to me. I'm not saying it doesn't exist. I'm just saying I'm unfamiliar with any of that. You know, again, you know, the wetlands, we talked about 30-year-old mapping, that was just identified the mature forest on the south half where we're boarding. The wetland study was done this spring. So it was field verified by biologists this spring. So it's not an old study. It's a brand-new study. Uh, he's licensed, obviously, in the wetland biology, so also the habitat and the species. And I understand there are other animals that live in the area. But again, you know, the concern from, you know, the permitting processes of the endangered enlisted species. The state has established several guidelines because obviously solar is not unique to this community. It's happening throughout the state. Uh, so they've established guidelines for how to deal with things like the bats. And really, you know, it comes down to when the trees are harvested. So the idea is after November till May, you can cut the trees without negatively impacting the bats because the bats have already moved onward to the caves for hibernation for the winter. So, you know, so addition to the, you know, how to mitigate the project to avoid those things, like I said, the bats. The state's also established guidelines for stormwater management and how sites are developed for solar so that they don't negatively impact the watersheds and, you know, the stormwater runoff. Uh, the project is larger acre, so it's required to file a site-specific speeds permit with the state, which identifies all the erosion control measures, uh, look at how it is impacted. And the state has basically established a set of guidelines that tells you if they're spaced accordingly and built a proper way, that they will not have a negative impact. Uh, so, you know, we've utilized those guidelines, you know, moving forward with this project. Uh, so again, you know, from stormwater, it also talks about how to build the roadways. So when you look at how to build a gravel road, how to put down geotechnical fabrics, you know, to minimize the impact of compaction of soils. So all those things are, you know, mandated by the state of how to develop the project. Uh, when it comes to, you know, the autofill and the secret process, the autofill obviously identifies historical sites and we have a historian here and he'll tell you. The secret process will basically tell you everything is in a historical site. They won't tell you what those sites are online because they're trying to protect those sites. They don't purposely put them online because they don't want people looking around and digging up things that they shouldn't be digging up. The project is required to file an application with SHPO, State Historic, or State Park Recreation, Historic Preservation, to ensure that there are no site-specific impacts with this application. So we've gone through, you know, the same studies, the same guidelines, the same formats as all the other projects. And remembering that the town board has established a set of guidelines that tells us where they can go, what the setbacks have to be, how to screen them, et cetera. And right, if you look at this project from a good neighbor's standpoint, I know a lot of people say, "Hey, they're ugly." You know, "I don't like them." But again, little no traffic, little no noise, no odor. Uh, you know, the technology and the arrays themselves has significantly changed, you know? So I just advise you to be careful when you're reading some of these run lines. So I just advise you be careful when you're reading some of those run lines because it is true. When you look at the technology from twenty-five years ago, remember twenty-five years ago, we were just starting with cell phones. You know, we're talking, you know, technology has jumped leaps and bounds since then, that the heavy metals and all the other aspects that were, you know, the negative components of the solar panels themselves that you see in a lot of studies in California and Arizona don't really pertain anymore because a lot of them have changed. The solar panels are all now UL-listed that are built in the US. There are more manufacturers in the US, you know, producing the panels. You know, so again, the state and the federal government establishes guidelines of how they're made, how they're installed. You know, NICE site comes and inspects the facility to make sure everything is compliant, national electrical code, et cetera. So the impact to the ground, because they are installed on a steel pile, really, you know, you have driving a pile on the ground, and then the light metal frame above it. So there's very little impact to the earth, the ground below it, and also makes for ease of decommission. So the project is responsible to provide a decommission plan that's reviewed by the town board. We're also required to provide bonding so that if the project ever went away or the applicant went away, there are money set aside for the town to do all the cleanup and restore it back to its natural condition. That was a concern on the other Bedard property, and it was this board, the planning board, went back and forth about the decommission plan, that it wasn't just pull the rays out and leave the meadow, it was actually re-vegetate. So it was as if the project left, we actually come back and replant the trees. So monies are set aside for all those components. So again, you know, I understand some of your concerns, but, you know, in looking at solar and you look at development, we have done, we've done well beyond what the law requires us to do as far as protection of the surrounding neighbors, the setbacks. When you talk about the bike path and number of, you know, residential subdivision, something that generates traffic, now we're going to put a lot of cars crossing that bike path. Where here, we're literally got no cars crossing the bike path, so it's just going to make the bike path safer than any other type of development. So, you know, I think, you know, you talk about the applicant, how all he cares about is, you know, the project to move forward, throwing down your throat. We're not. You know, as I said, we've scaled it back from our original application. We try to find sites that are already disturbed, already developed. You know, when we talk about, hey, use the old Miramar site, use the old Wyeth site, those are actually more frowned upon from a community standpoint because although you say, hey, it's already down asphalt field, the issue there is you already have water, sewer, you know, and the site's more suitable for other commercial development that would help benefit the town. That the laws are really created to kind of put these kind of setback off the beaten path a little bit. I think that's why when the town wrote their ordinance, they had greater setbacks from major highways like we'd ever in the interstate compared to some of the other roads. But again, we are still, you know, three hundred and fifty feet from nearest residence property line, not the residence. We have six hundred feet to the south line, and so we really have tried to take some of your concerns into effect and downsize the project so that it is, you know, something that complies with all the laws and regulations and obviously produces the minimum impact possible on the community.
Yes, you have another question?
I just have to say, so you're, you talk about us doing, looking at information that's possibly twenty-five years old and how it's inaccurate, but you're bringing in a thirty-year-old map, and I want to know what, when you start cutting down the trees, you're cutting them down in a time where it's not going to affect the bats, you say, but what happens to come the following year? Where are they going to go when they leave the caves and you go back to trees? And the trees aren't there, their habitat isn't there?
Or it, I mean, again, this is a permissible project. So, you know, to say that we should just stop development in town Champlain, we shouldn't allow any trees to be cut at all in the town then. And it just, you know, so there has to be a balance. I think that's why the town board has to establish laws and regulations that the zoning plane board must follow. And it's a fine line, I don't want to have a debate site because, you know, I don't want, you know, turn it that way, but it's, you know, I understand, but there are ways to protect the species. The state has established those guidelines, and I know there's concerns about the turkeys and the deer, but again, those are not protected species, so the state does not consider cutting their habitat as a, something that would cause a negative impact on the environment.
I just want to say, this area, this entire area isn't a wildlife corridor, that, not the entire Champlain, not all of that, only this part of the particular area we're looking at is. So why on a wildlife corridor? When?
When you yourself said that you specifically look for undis, already disturbed sites, how is that forest an undisturbed, or an already disturbed site? It's undisturbed.
Again, the key factor in selecting this portion of the site was to utilize the area that does not have a mature growth on.
Jesus Christ, some of those trees are there over a hundred years old. Okay, but we really don't want the debating going on. We have need questions that are specific to the project.
Okay, I have a question that's specific.
And just a, just a comment, should we direct it to the board, not for debate between the applicant?
Okay, I have a question.
And?
Yes, sir.
Members of the community.
I have a question, well, question and a comment. The existing solar farms that you have here, where were the panels manufactured?
You, I'm sorry, what was the question?
Where were the solar panels in the existing two fields that we have now? Where were they manufactured?
I'm not sure.
I'm asking the engineer.
Well, really should direct your question.
Well, okay, but you said, you started out, you said to ask him questions, he would answer questions.
Well.
I mean, I don't care who answers it, I'm just.
It's a totally different project, Tom.
Yeah, he, he may not know, he may not, he, he was involved in one of the, well, the other project on 276, Aaron was involved in, but the other project that don't believe he was involved in.
I don't know on those two projects. There are manufacturers throughout the US that are producing them. There is difficulty in them keeping up with production, so our federal government has allowed the import from Asia additional panels. They do still all have to comply with the same UL rating, the UL standards. Almost all manufacturer, at least the ones that we deal with, come with a manufacturer, a twenty-five-year manufacturer warranty. So the idea is that they will continue to produce at the same level for a minimum of twenty-five years. And then after that, they could start to generate and be replaced. But again, some of your car, when your warranty expires, the silver.
Okay, but so you don't know that they're made in the United States. You're just saying that if it's in the United States, it meets UL standards, but more than likely, they're probably made in China because that's where ninety percent of them are made now.
I don't want to emphasize that was not involved, though.
And you don't know what these new ones are going to be, where they're going to be sourced because that's what I just asked. The other thing, the other comment that I will make is that he's saying that we're adverse to development. This is not development, this is exploitation. Because development is, you get something in return for it. The community gets a job, they get a building, they get a store, they get tax revenue. This is people from not here making money off us, producing electricity that's not needed or used here. That's exploitation. There's a difference.
Thank you. And I think you had wanted to say something.
I, I have a question that I would like to address to the board. The biologist that he made reference to, his whatever expert on bats that he thinks is, I would like to know what branch of the government that biologist is affiliated with? Is it the DEC? Is it the US Wildlife, Fish and Wildlife? Who is this biologist and where, what are their credentials and where, who do they work for?
Is there a specific reference to that?
Yeah, similar to engineering, the wetland biologist, the species biologist in New York State that was done by private licensed facilities, so B-line associates. We have personally been working with them for thirty years doing projects throughout the state. The idea is that you produce the studies, and those studies are reviewed by this board. The state does not come up and do a wetland delineation unless you're within five hundred feet of a state-published wetland, which we are not. So the state does not do that, and the state does not do the species counts unless they're expanded.
So these statistics are based off of private industry that are providing the information?
So he's a licensed, he's a New York State licensed wetland biologist and.
He just said it wasn't.
Animal habitat, so I provide you his letter for the record.
Tracy, could I, what, because it pertains to something that you just said.
Yes, you can.
When I was at the zoning board in, the Clinton, Clinton County zoning board meeting on the, I think it was the fifth, I brought up the Upland Sandpiper.
Yes, and they did provide in their feedback, the planning department.
Let me finish, though. I brought that up because I called the DEC, and I chatted with a gentleman from the DEC. And he said, yeah, he says, here's just an example, he said, the Upland Sandpiper. He said, it's a grassland bird, but it is known to be in that area. And he said, we would have to do a study, a specific study. So what was interesting was at the meeting, nobody from the solar company knew about the Upland Sandpiper. And suddenly, what was the name of that bird again? And then suddenly, it appears, the one and only thing that appears in the seeker report. Well, you see the page that Cindy just gave you, I mean, there's a whole slew of these protected animals. And I know he's citing state, 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 state. I'm talking federal, federal, federal. I think that supersedes state. You're messing around with federal agencies here that I don't think have been contacted, and if you don't do the right thing, I hate to think of the fines. Just throwing that out there.
Thank you.
Do your due diligence.
Chris, you'd wanted to say something?
Oh, I was just going to tell Tom, if he wants to give me his contact info, I can go through the permits for future reference and tell you where the panels for the other ones were made. I just don't have them here and have to pull the plans. So if you want to send me an email with contact info, I can at least get that to you for future reference.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, already?
Yes, ma'am.
You have anything that you would like to say per se in regards to the conversation?
Well, I just had a question for Aaron, I guess, the wetlands, Aaron. I was looking at the maps that I have, and I, and I'm sure there are other maps that I just don't have and just submitted, but where are the wetlands located on this property?
Right, so they're showing on the map here, so the ditch, I think that someone made reference to, runs along the east side by two hundred feet, parallel to Hayford Road, that turns and flows easterly towards the golf course, but there's a low lying area here in the southeast corner that kind of flooded back, so this whole southeast side out of three parcels that are supposed to be dealt with solar, so they're there. As far as procedurally, I mean, Tom, we've let, let away some of this, but, you know, there are different involved agencies with every project. So as you trigger a freshwater wetlands permit, so if we were working in the wetlands, that then involves other federal agencies. If you are doing a project that is not requiring a federal permit, then certain federal agencies don't get involved, state agencies get involved. So, you know, looking at this project, what the triggers are for permitting requirements, we feel we have satisfied the concerns for the bats, flea, birds. Again, the other items are not protected, but yes, I mean, there is the potential for an impact to the deer habitat, but again, you know, those are not mandatory things. And I mean, and I know it's hard to argue, but again, you know, this project is something that is authorized by the town board under your local zoning board. So, you know, there are, you know, it's a specially used permit, and it gives the board, you know, the zoning board the ability to look closely at these aspects. Again, it's something that the town board has determined is acceptable use in this area as long as you meet certain guidelines.
At least, sir, you had your question.
Would you please describe again what you're talking about in terms of wetlands? You keep mentioning a ditch that runs down.
Trying to look closer, right. So there's a swale that runs down here along the east side, that's at about two hundred feet off of Hayford Road, that comes, turns, heads easterly here, but it does saturate this whole area in the southeast corner of the property, and that was identified as the.
Yeah, that stream that comes, that you're talking about crosses the Hayford Road and runs all the way down through the golf course.
Right here, yep.
And that runs pretty much most of the year.
Right, and the project has been designed to completely avoid that part of them.
Okay. Board members, what would you like to, in conversation, I know what I would like to think about doing. There's been a lot of information provided to us that is above and beyond what is being proposed by the, by Mr. Oveas. Personally, I think that we should table this and do an our own environmental engineering review through, through the ability that we have, something independent from the company that's proposing the project, so that we can have, have another set of eyes look at it that's independent from this project. And that's my thoughts on it. I don't know, whatever else, do you agree? Or I don't, or believe that would be something that would be feasible? That we are taking the concerns, bringing them in, into the project, and trying to be as fair and equitable as we can to all the parties. It's not just about the solar farm, it's about the community, and that's what I feel. I don't know. What's your opinions?
Diane, frankly, certainly the board has that ability to request that. I, Chris has mentioned something else to me as well, but I know one of the things that we have to review and look at is whether or not the area, I mean, it's certainly not farmland as it currently exists, but that, Aaron, have you looked to see whether or not there's any, like, ag or farmland overlay for this area?
This parcel does not fall within the ag district or prime agricultural land. So again, that's something that the town board, the adoption of the law, looked at avoiding and talked about having, you know, minimal impacts on active and prime agricultural land, but we are not in that, for certain reasons.
Right, no, I, I know that's a concern, but Chris was mentioning that this area may be, may be contained in some.
Yeah, according to this list, it would, we just have to look into it.
That's what I'm saying, I think that there's more discussion that has to occur in regards to all the data that's been provided to us. I know, I don't feel I can make a vote today because I think that there's more to this that has to be reviewed. I think maybe a special work, work day created for the board to come together to review this information. It'd be open to the public. Obviously, we would not have people speaking, it would be just a work session for the board to hash out the information that we have, have time to get a independent environmental review, engineering review, and hopefully, we'd be able to bring all that together and come up with a, with a plan for what we can do with this.
Right, I mean, again, and Aaron mentioned this, but there is certainly in our ordinance, you know, when you look through some of the things we have to be concerned about as far as standards for large-scale solar systems or requirements for large scale, one is, you know, protection of agriculture resources, which I think, you know, basically, Chris told me, is something we need to look at. But also maintenance of natural vegetation and wildlife. I certainly understand and have reviewed what Aaron has submitted as part of this project, so application as well as seeker, but there seems to be some other information that we should at least explore to make sure that this board and/or the town is doing a thorough review with respect to these specific issues.
Yes.
And if, and if, if something like that exists, it specifies in here that the board has the authority to dictate methods to mitigate adverse effects to wildlife, wildlife habitats, travel corridors, migration routes, whatever the case may be. And it has some suggestion regarding ways of dealing with that, but if, if there really is an issue regarding that, we need to perhaps get more.
Do our due diligence.
Get more information and do our due diligence.
Yeah, I, that's where I'm coming from, in regards to how I feel we should address the, you know, going forward. We have a lot of information, we have a lot of things to figure out, but I think it would be wise to, myself, wise to do an independent environmental engineering review for this property.
Right, and, and in our local law, under section 130104, there is a review cost provision where we can actually ask the applicant to pay for that expense. I, I believe the applicant has, has paid a certain fee to the town already for this project, and I don't know if it's the one percent of the estimated cost of the project, I'm guessing it probably isn't, but I don't, I can't say I know. But the bottom line is, is that we can request that they pay for whatever consultants we need to employ to at least answer some of the questions that we feel need to be answered or at least explored.
So, I would ask for a motion for.
Make a motion, we table the application.
And pursue.
Pursue an environmental study.
Yeah, you could, either it's through us or with the town, basically, seek out some type of environmental engineer or resource to, like, to explore some of these issues that. issues that are raised tonight, whether it's, it's the wildlife, travel corridors, plants, et cetera, just...
Danger species.
Danger species.
The light, the light issue that was brought up, the lake effect, kind of thing. I mean, there's lots of things that are part of this.
Yeah, there's just been a lot of things that have been raised that I think we probably need more information on at least. And with all due respect to Mr. Obvious, I mean, he represents the applicant, I'm certainly not thinking, he's not providing any false information, but we may need to at least explore some of the issues, other issues that have been raised.
I'll second these motions.
Vote, Matt, oh, can't, sorry, Kevin?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yeah.
Natasha?
Yes.
And I'm yes.
Thank you very much, Natasha.
Thank you. Uh, now, what was the timeline that, I think Tom just said some sort of timeline exists for...
Provide research and tell by the 62 days. Yeah, like 62 days.
62 days.
So, we need to...
Make a meeting or...
We need to, we need to at least start that process as soon as possible.
So, will we make, will we make an agenda meeting for the future for this, or do we wait, wait until, I mean, I'd like to have a work meeting for going over this information.
Okay.
I think it would be important, important to do, because there's a lot of information. Can't possibly one of us know.
Oh, yeah, might as well.
Would that be part of that?
Right, I think we can start that process immediately.
Okay.
And then after we've talked to Mr. Obvious about the costs, et cetera, and, and if it starts process as soon as possible, we don't, we want to, we want to treat everybody fairly as well.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
How many days are we currently at?
It starts today, the 62 days?
Yes, the public hearing is today.
All right. So we did the roll, is there anything else we need to do on this call?
I could just request a copy of the materials that were submitted by the audience a second. I'd have to respond to it.
You got anything else?
No, I, that's all I had to give. Uh, was there something else that's... I'll probably have a couple others.
Um, I give you back one of the things that was submitted by these folks, but I don't, I don't know if there's other, you folks have said you've submitted some other documents to...
I gave a petition to Julie.
Yeah, Julie has that.
The package that you gave to everybody, I didn't get that package.
We can get you one.
So, if I can have that.
Right.
Or one of, could one of the, the board members give it to Julie to copy for you?
The, the, the bird package, we do have that.
She has that.
Right.
Yeah, but the one that each of the board members got, could one of the board members give the package to Julie and have her copy that for you?
Yeah, I think Natasha's gonna.
Yeah, I don't know if I have that.
No, you probably don't, we only made a certain amount, we only made one for these guys. Didn't know you were here.
No, I'm making, making sure you have, you know, everything else, I'll, you know, your copy, I'll come up with...
Okay, so Tom, in regards to this application, I'm thinking that we can get out of the public meeting now?
Yes.
And go, okay. So I need a motion to leave the public meeting on application 23003 regarding the solar power network, specialist approval to return to our regular meeting.
Make that motion.
Can I have a second? Okay, thank you. Roll. Kevin?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yeah.
Natasha?
Yes.
I'm yes. All right.
Tracy, are you opening a public session after executive session or not?
Uh, no, well, we just had the public.
You're done, okay.
We're done, yep, now we are going back to our regular meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Excuse me, Tracy?
Yes.
Just like to say thank you for your comments and position you're taking, I appreciate it.
I'm just trying to be fair to all involved, that's all. Thank you, everybody, for coming, appreciate it.
You got HR?
No, I don't have that.
Cindy?
Yep.
She gives us the...
Add you to Tracy, see, she's got that along with the original law, the original law.
She's a Canadian.
Okay, Tracy has it.
Tracy has it.
I have one.
Because migratory bird act.
Yeah, I'm kidding.
I'll be copies.
She's only got some.
You don't have the whole map, and now there's more, Tracy.
Thank you, Megan.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, so we have, is Baptiste Gissner, I got you?
Uh, that's Martin for this time, Baptiste will be absent.
Okay, um, do you have something in writing that you're able to represent him in today's, today?
Oh, I'm the, I'm the manager, well, I'm the head of the company, pretty much.
Usually we have something in writing that provides you the opportunity to act on his behalf.
Uh, all right, okay. Is it because he wrote, I'm sorry, is it because he wrote the letter to the town? Normally, I would be the first, um, the highest official in the company.
He's the one that filled out the applications? And he just identified...
He put his name instead of, yeah.
Right, he identified just himself as the applicant, not a company, not a business, just himself.
Okay, do you want, I could call him if you want.
Um, how would that work from?
Well, we would really need something...
In writing here.
In writing, authorizing you to speak on his behalf, or at least clarifying who the applicant is or the owner.
Yeah, could we, could we clarify for the application, can we, can we change the name?
You, you can, but not, not right now, not tonight.
So what can we do for tonight to work?
Well, I, I would say, um, at least for tonight, if, if just gentleman wants to at least, you know, indicate what he wants to do, or what whoever the applicant wants, what they want to do, that's fine, we can look at it like as a sketch review. Can't take any formal action tonight on the application till it gets clarified for us. So you can, you can at least explain who you are, so we can certainly hear that tonight, but we really can't take any formal action till the applications themselves are...
So we, we have to redo all this?
Well, if, if it's gonna be a different entity that's applying, and or even for yourself to be here to present the application, it has to be somebody who is, I mean, the applicant right now is Baptiste.
Yeah, 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 there's been a mistake.
Not, not, not a company, not an entity.
Yeah.
Um, so he is the one that's applied for this relief. So if he's not here, and he's not the entity that's seeking it, we can't really vote on anything. I mean, if you're saying those are an error, you, you at least want to explain to us what you want to do, that's fine.
Yeah.
And we can give you some information, but we cannot take any formal action on the application until those are corrected and the proper parties are identified.
Okay, so there's nothing we can do tonight, even if I call him, even if you, we FaceTime him and he's present virtually here, that would not work.
I, I would say not, only because we have the applications in place the way they are right now.
Okay, so he has to be physically here, he cannot be virtually here.
Again, we would need, yeah, we're...
Yeah, but then have...
Yeah, we, well, yeah, we're not, we're not really set up for that type of operation, unfortunately. I mean, I know you have a phone, and, and I know that works, but again, the applicant, applications are in his name, and I think if he's gonna present them, or someone else is gonna present them, we need, we need him here, or at least him granting authority to somebody else to do it, rather than just somebody on the phone.
And we could not do this with a visual call, just per minute.
And with all due respect, I mean, we don't know, none of us know Mr. Gissner, so... Do you? Okay, well, I think we still need a little bit more information, and or some clarification as to what's really going on. We have, but...
Is the, the name supposed to be the old border station LLC?
Okay.
Because that's what's listed on GIS too.
Yes, the old border station.
Who owns the property is the old border station LLC, who is Baptiste, and I believe you, it's both of them.
But currently, in our database at the real property office, it's still the old border station LLC.
Correct.
Which I am 50% owner.
Basically, I think the title on this variance has to be the old border station LLC. I think so.
Just because of its nature, and then we would need an indication of who is able to act on behalf of LLC.
I'm the, I'm the number one officer for LLC.
I know at the, at the county, you know, we have, if somebody wants a change of address or something, and, and it's in the name of an LLC, they have to provide the articles that give the authority to whoever signs that document to make the change. So, I mean, because we don't know these people, we don't know who, who's behind the LLC, so we, we have to, and it's more of a protection thing, to make sure that whoever's asking for that change is authorized to do so. So, I mean, and this is more of making sure that who can do it is...
Yeah, and we're not suggesting you're not telling us the truth.
Oh, right, exactly.
I'm just trying to help you out to, to fix this right now, I mean...
No, I, I appreciate that.
Save everybody some time.
No, I know, I appreciate it.
I, I can provide some, some paper to hire to, I mean, poster here, to...
Well, yeah, so I, again, I don't think we can take any formal action on it this evening. If, if you want to identify yourself again, sir?
Yeah.
And then tell us a little about what you want to do, we can at least have a discussion about it, but I think prior to making any decisions, we need obviously that information. And, and clarifying documentation.
So I see there's two applications, one for a area variance and one for a use variance?
Yes.
Okay, so we'd want to maybe speak to those individually, if you're going to let us, give us information?
Do you have any questions regarding this, or do you want me to tell you?
Explain to us what you're trying, what you're wanting to do.
So, I, I don't know if you guys are, are acquainted to, to where the old border station was, the old, uh...
The Meridian Road.
So that building was abandoned for quite some years, and, um, we are distillers, so the, the, the Meridian Road is, is one of the very renowned area for, for bootlegging back, way back in the days, and, and it's, it has an iconic history. Uh, that's, that's why we decided to, to choose that location. Now, there's two buildings on, 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 on the property, one which is a house which will remain, remain a house that we're gonna, we're gonna try to fix up. And the other building is the old weigh station, where they would weigh in the cattle, I believe, where we're gonna have the distillery, where the usage, where the change of the zone that we need for, for the production to be done. It's a very small production, it'll probably make about 40 barrels a year, it's a very, very small thing. I don't think you guys are very, are gonna notice that we're even there. You know, the, the only thing that we were asked for from the town that I think was to clean up the yard best we could, so we planted some trees to, to, to help with the, you know, shade out the area so we could, you know, get rid of all that invasive species. I don't know what, sorry, pardon my French, but there's a, there's a invasive plant that's, I mean, they'll tear up your skin.
Poison ivy?
Yeah, it's not poison ivy, it's got another name, it's a big white flower, and it's been infesting that area, so we try to keep it under control, and we try to do it without pesticides, and this project doesn't, uh, it won't, it won't act on the environment, it won't, I'm not gonna, we're not gonna, I actually built, uh, one of the big downside to distilleries are the use of water, abusive use of water, and I built a, 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 um, basically a condenser that does not use water. It's, well, it, it does, but it does not reuse water, it's only a certain amount of volume that'll always be reused, so it's a closed cycle, and since we have such small production, we can, we can basically just use body of water to, to cool things down. We don't produce constantly, so we, we won't have an issue on, you know, using, you know, millions of liters of water. It is a new, it is a new way to do things, it's not the traditional way of, of, of just using water and throwing it down the drain. So there's a, we believe that this is gonna be a, you know, a pretty good step forward, and I think people will be, will be able to, to look, you know, into that opportunity and, and not, not waste so much water doing, you know, making alcohol and, and any byproducts, which are, you know, perfumes or things like that. That's, that's pretty much it, I don't know if you guys have questions, and I mean, there's not, it's not a big, it's not a big project, it's a...
The area variance, which is one of the applications, says you need to apply for it because it's, you only have a one and a half acre lot, and you need two acres based off of the requirements?
Yeah, so there's two buildings on that lot. Those buildings were put there by customs at the time, so to do anything, they'd have to have two acres, one acre for each building, so they'd have to get that area variance. I think in my conversations with you and Baptiste, the weigh station is gonna actually be the distillery part. The old customs house is gonna be a residence up top?
Yeah.
And like, you had said something about a tasting room downstairs?
Um, it's, it's not gonna be a public thing, it's, it's where, it's, um, in that area where it's, it's basically gonna be one of the, the tasting room is more of a lab kind of thing, where you try to, where you take products, I'll just explain, it's gonna be easier. Let's say you make a gin, okay, and you have a, you have five different aromas, where, what you have to do to, to, to fine tune your product is you need to mix all your different flavor, flavors into volumes to, to try to tou, to touch the, the taste you really want. So if you compare that to something like Jack Daniels or Jameson, where they're just pushing alcohol all the way through and they're mixing it with all the old batch, we're, we're, we're gonna do this differently, we're gonna try to really make a specific taste, and for this, we need to test on volumes, just like you would in a laboratory, where you would try 200 different things, with 200 different matches, and, and mixes, to see which one will be the, the right mix, and then, and then from there, you produce all the volumes in, in the volumes that you need. So that's, that, I think that's, I think that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, so yeah, area variance, we need an extra half acre, in terms of the use variance, because that is zone residential, but only that one lot.
Well, that is actually in the, in our, it's, it's a commercial...
Residential.
This is a commercial business, though, it's a commercial parcel. It's in our database as a...
Right, that doesn't have anything to do with our zoning.
To what you're doing, okay.
Yeah, so our zoning, because it's zone residential, that business is not allowed use there, so that's what we need the use variance.
And it's, it's not allowed, but yet it has existed as a commercial business in that...
Not in our, it was commercial because of the customs house, so the government can put wherever they want, wherever they want, we don't regulate any of it. Now that it's been turned over to a private organization, they fall under the town of Shamblin zoning, so it makes it, so it's a residential, it's all a residential. And so that's in an entire residential zone, according to the zoning ordinance.
So there's a disconnect with, I was, I was just, between what our date, what real property shows and what you're showing us.
Right, and, and you're right, I mean, historically, it was a border station, et cetera, it would have been, been commercial, albeit a quite different use than a distillery.
Yes.
So, even if, and, you know, under our ordinance, it was a commercial use at one time, and that use discontinued for a period of year, of one year, then the applicant has to comply with the current zoning requirements, it's no longer a preexisting nonconforming use.
Right.
So, the applicant has to comply with the current zoning, which indicates it's a residential use, so therefore, to put a commercial use back in there, he needs to get a use variance. Even if it was a commercial use and that use stopped six months ago, depending on the use, if it was different than a distillery, he would still have to come back, because again, the use, the preexisting use would, was different than the, the proposed, so one way or another, he would need a use variance, and that's what he needs. The other question would be, does it require at some point site plan? Because is, is it gonna be open to the general public?
No.
It's just like a research type of, sounds like?
We're not even gonna bottle there, we're just gonna make the barrels, and then once, once the barrels are ready, they're gonna be shipped out to a bottling plant, and we bottle, bottle there.
So you just, are you just making the barrels, or are you making the liquor?
No, we're making the liquor, and we make our own barrels, but, but... No, we're making the liquor and we make our own barrels, but but we're making liquor, we're making the liquor there and filling the barrels and these barrels are.
It's manufacturing.
Yeah, well, manufacturing, it's 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 too small to be a to be a manufacturing plant, it's more of a farm than a than a manufacturing plant. The volumes are very low.
Do you do this someplace else now?
Baptiste, uh, Baptiste has a, he's a partner in a distillery, new distillery that will open in Quebec City, uh, which is called Arsenal. That is a, that is a big distillery, it's a, it's more of a, more of your traditional, you know, industrial uh distillery. This is a, this project is more of a. I don't know the word exactly, but it's the, it's a small, in in terms of the industry, it's a small batch uh place where he he. There's not, before we can even think of selling something, it'll probably take ten years. So um, once we start producing, uh, you know, it'll probably take ten years before we bottle the first barrel, which I mean, it'll be far away from here probably. You know, probably be able to use some of the grains from the malt company from here.
So this is like a market research type of thing where you're you're creating something and.
No, this is a brand that is just, i- it's a brand that will be sold in very small amounts.
To see if it's viable to the grander scale?
No.
No?
No, 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 this this is a small scaled from day one to to the last day. The market for these products is very small. I mean, um, there's no turn, there's no turnover, these these bottles you won't see on the shelf uh here in Champlain at the liquor store. They'll be very, it'll be private, you know, uh, private buyers, um, and probably, you know, luxury hotels and and exclusive, some some will want exclusive brands for themselves and. It's just a higher end, uh, it's just a higher end product and it cannot be made in a volume and it cannot be made by an industry, it has to be made has to be made almost in a lab.
What made you choose this particular place to do that?
Oh, it's the story of the Meridian Road.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
There's just all the bootlegging that was going on there and, you know, the 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 history of of, the history of the the bourbon on this area is just iconic. And I mean, there's, it was a beaten down building, it was not expensive. It was far away from 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 anyone to to even, you know, bother people, it doesn't make any sound, so and and it had its, it had its, you know, it had its water. Everything, everything was there, so.
Now, Chris, can you work with him to correct this?
What's the what's the water source, is it a well?
Yeah, it's a well.
Well, thanks for the uh, for the summary on this.
The, so if I if I may, I see, so so the area variance application obviously is fairly self-explanatory, you need two acres, you only have an acre and a half, it's a pre-existing lot. Okay, get that, understand that. For to, just to explain this to you, for the other application you filed is for a use variance. So use variances under New York State law, as well as Town of Champlain law, we've we've adopted New York State law, are difficult to obtain. There are very specific standards that an applicant has to meet in order to get a use variance. Reason being is, you wanna put it, put a use in an area that the town basically says shouldn't be there. Granted, it's a historic building, I understand that, so you have some issues, I'm gonna say, that are in your favor, okay? So you may wanna talk to Mr. Battat at least so he can kind of instruct you on some of the requirements or Baptiste can, and maybe Baptiste, maybe you talk to Baptiste about what he needed to do. But the standards are rigid and you have to meet all of the standards in order to get the use variance approved.
Yes.
I would also suggest or recommend that if you could also provide us with some kind of, does this certainly like plan over the property, showing where the buildings are? Because we don't, I mean, we can drive by and see it.
So I I we did, we did have engineers send you a plan with a stamp?
Do we have that?
You're supposed to have it.
I think the plans that were sent were like the construction plans.
You you had the, no, no, the, these engineers have been hired for the distillery.
I would like to see the construction plans too, I mean, we all would, just to see what, like maybe the floor plan or layout.
Yeah.
But but I'm also more concerned about just seeing where these two buildings are on the property. What's the proposed parking?
There's no difference, there's nothing changes.
Oh, no, no, but it.
No.
We would like to see it on paper.
You should have it.
Okay.
This is been submitted.
We can check that, oh, look, I think there was a disconnect.
Yeah, when was it submitted?
What I got.
A while ago.
And these applications are.
We actually missed the last meeting because we didn't know that we were supposed to be here.
Who were they submitted to, maybe that might be?
I I think, uh, is, uh, sorry, I forget your.
Chris?
Chris, yeah, I always think it's Matt.
Yeah, so this was submitted to me.
Okay. What you guys lot we received, I didn't get anything else.
So.
This is your whole lot.
What I would, what I would suggest or recommend is that whether it's yourself or Baptiste, speak to Mr. Battat. Let's, um, I guess get get straight now, who the applicant is, who are who are the parties, who's gonna speak? We need all that in writing, if we can get a layout of the property, if there are construction plans showing what's inside proposed distillery. I think we would like to see that, at least I would like to see that.
Yeah, the, yeah, this is supposed to be in the plans.
Okay, we need to see those kinds of things, but also, speaking to Mr. Battat, um, he can at least tell you what the specific criteria that are that are required to get a use variance. They're in the application and 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 Baptiste, if Baptiste is willing to fill that out, has provided some information, we may need more than that, okay?
I would just need to know what you need.
Correct, so, um, because again, area variance standards a little less, use variance standards are high.
And then the use variance uh application that I had doesn't even speak to those criteria.
Right, yeah. You have, speak to.
I can see, hold on now.
The application has the points in there, but to say that they answered them.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry, here it is, yeah, I understand.
The criteria are in there, but.
They really have to be well answered and.
Right.
I mean.
Can I, can I hear some of the questions that would be not answered well?
Well, uh, let me get to it here. The four points that you have to meet, they have to be all four.
Yep.
Are, one, there has to be a reasonable return, the reasonable return cannot be made by using the property for the permitted uses within the zoning district. Like, oh, no, sorry, explain how a reasonable return cannot be made by using the property for the permitted uses within our zoning district. So you have to prove why your use is a better use than what currently is allowed.
See, right, so, Dan, to to give you some insight, so that property is owned residential.
Yeah.
You have to explain to us why it's not feasible that perhaps the two structures that are on that property could be renovated to be residential properties. Why that economically is not a feasible um use for that property, okay?
Okay, so.
And and dollars, dollars, you have to prove financial evidence that, so dollars and cents proof as to why that's the case.
So so the one that will stay residential, which is can be residential, will stay residential, that there is no use variance for that building, right?
Well, it's a mixed use, correct?
It would be mixed use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that building at one point could be resold as a house. The other one uh had, I mean, this was a cattle barn, uh, yeah, the, I don't think you could use that as a house because you, there's, I mean, there's no.
So so you need to prove to that us that in dollars and cents proof, whether it's even by pictures of what's in there.
How much would it cost to make that be to fit the zoning that exists there?
Yeah, to make it, if it's a residential zone, say, to convert that into a single family residence.
Okay.
And I'm assuming it would be rather expensive.
I mean, I mean, some some people live in containers, so I guess you can live in anything. If we're gonna be going down that road, uh, you can, you can find anyone to to live in there. The the upside is bringing um a brand that can go worldwide and that is, Baptiste, you don't know about him, but he's a fairly famous person. And um, um, he does have, you know, he does appear on TV and he does uh, he does appeal to a lot of people and he has made brands that have gone, you know, international. And uh, there it, there's a, there's a possibility to bring this old history back to live to life and and that, I mean.
Again, we're not, we're not saying.
If you if you wanna see the difference in dollars, that explanation will give you an idea of the different slope of living in a container house rather than having an upper uphill brand.
Right, but that's the kind of, we need that information.
You you know it's impossible to 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 forecast the this possibility because it's a luxury product.
Right, but just, but just explain to us that and provide financial information.
So I can work with you guys on that.
Yeah, yeah.
I did find the plans you sent and like I said, the plans I was sent have only a partial site plan, it would be.
Is this the the engineer's plans?
Yeah, so this has a partial site plan, that's not what this board would need, um, because it doesn't give any distances, the lot lines, anything like that. The rest of it is construction documents that I would then need for the permit side, not for this board.
Okay.
So, and I can give you in detail what you'll need, or I can just reach out to the engineer that did this.
Yeah.
And tell them I need a full site plan for review and they'll know.
Okay.
What's needed.
The the next criteria is that the the alleged hardship was somewhat unique to this property. And that may be something that's easier to answer on your behalf, I mean, it's a historic building, you know, the history of the property. It's a very small lot, a residential zone right on the Canadian border. So the fact that the property is unique, that might be an easier criteria for you to meet. Will the project alter the essential character of the neighborhood? That's also, I think, something that might be in your benefit because the buildings exist. I'm assuming by putting in the distillery itself, you're not really gonna change what the property looks like in any way, you're just gonna be operating out of that separate building.
No, it's just gonna get cleaner.
Yeah, so it's not, it's probably not gonna change, it's probably gonna get positive maybe to the character of the neighborhood. The last item is 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 the alleged hardship self-created. That's something that doesn't necessarily weigh in your behalf either, because you've already purchased the property with, I think, the intent of doing this without really checking into the zoning first, but let's deal with the first crit- the first three criteria, in particular, the first one, the financial aspect, that's usually the hardest one to meet. The other two, maybe even the the last one, we can review, but the first one's gonna be your your hardest one to meet.
But unfortunately, all four have to do that.
Correct.
To make this use a possibility.
So, yeah, whether it's yourself or or Baptiste.
So can I, can I ask a question about that first point?
Yeah.
So if we didn't come in and start fixing the 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 house, it would just, you know, end up in ruins, right? I mean, I mean, it wasn't, I mean, I remember coming in the first time and windows busted down and the rain, the snow was coming in and there was four feet of water in the basement and you know, that that plant was growing everywhere, probably eleven foot high. So that does bring value to a house if you start cleaning it, right?
Yeah, I mean, the fact that you you've taken some steps to to make the property certainly a lot more attractive than it was, I.
So so what's what's, what dollar does the town want to see? Because you wanna know if I can fix and resale?
We wanna know, since the property is owned residential.
Yeah.
And in that area, I'm assuming the only residential use is single family, double family, whatever the case may be. Is it feasible to convert that building, from an economic standpoint, into a a residential building? So what that would require is you perhaps to get something maybe from a contractor saying, hey, this is what it's gonna cost to convert that building into a residence. And if the cost is exorbitant, which I can imagine it might be, but I I'm not a, I'm not a contractor, that's something that weighs in your favor because, okay, does it make sense for us to put a hundred thousand dollars in this building to make it into residential property to comply with zoning?
So I think your your best bet with that building, you'd get someone in there to say, because if someone's gonna build a house there, they're probably gonna tear both buildings down. So get a cost of what it would have cost to demo those buildings and then build a brand new house there. And if that says, oh, it would have been, you know, almost a million dollars or vice versa, we're gonna spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars renovating these whole buildings and using them how they are. That's kinda what you're gonna show there.
Right, that's gonna weigh in your favor.
Which that, the the cost of demolition and building there would be very high.
It'd be pretty high.
So that's what you need to show.
You would re- probably realize a reasonable return from doing that, as you would doing what you wanted to do.
Okay, but but the return, when you say about the return, since I'm not gonna live there, it it cannot be my primary home.
Well, well, basically.
What do you mean by living there, I mean?
So like, the return on that would be, I'm spending a million dollars to build a house, my return is living there for a million dollars. Whereas your return for putting a hundred thousand dollars into it, your return is the board now is only spending a hundred to then make money on the property.
Right.
You know.
Like, you're gonna build this hundred thousand dollar home, let's just say, and but you can't sell it for that. So you're not able to get a reasonable return from the efforts of making it something that.
That complies with the zoning.
Complies with the zoning.
So so say, as as Chris said, so say, for example, the cost of demolition and construction to build a new house and that is a million dollars. Well, are you gonna be able to sell that house for a million dollars? No, odds are you're not gonna be able to. So so that, you're not gonna get a reasonable return on what you have to put into that property um to then go sell it.
Right.
So if you put a million in and hey, I might, I might get two hundred and fifty thousand at the end by doing that, well, that's not, that's obviously not a reasonable return, that's no return.
So.
It's a negative return.
So do I need to to, do I need to bother people to get, you know, to make people count how much this would cost or can we estimate it? Because I mean, I'm I'm gonna be calling people and asking them, how much does it cost to them to demo this? And they're gonna come and they're gonna waste their time, because I'm not gonna.
But but it may be some, but but it may be something you you that we need at least to see, I'm not saying you're gonna hire them to demo it, but again, we need to know.
The dollars and cents.
We need to know those numbers.
I I I understand, but can we, can we give you an estimate? Or do we, do we have, do I have to call the company and tell them, I need an estimate for this and I'm not gonna do it?
You you could, there's some companies that you say, I just need a rough estimate on demolition of two buildings this size. And over the phone, they should be able to say X amount of dollars, yeah.
So and I need a paper for this.
Yes, yeah, we need, we need to see.
Okay.
We need to see financial proof, dollars and cents proof for that requirement.
Okay, and and uh, so if I were to put on a, you know, just the 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 cheapest house I can find and you you can always argue that you can make it cheaper and cheaper and cheaper. So this would, you know, anything on there doesn't have to compare to what it was. I mean, if you can, if you rebuilt exactly what this was, today it would cost millions of dollars, I mean, you cannot do this with the labor you have now.
And that's exactly what they're saying, that that, doing that would not give you a reasonable return.
Okay.
If you put all that effort and money into it to then turn around and sell it, I mean, it wouldn't.
Okay, yeah, so so est- yeah, estimates won't work, so we're just gonna.
Well, estimates are fine, but not by you, right, it's just an email from someone, so you get a demolition expert who says it's gonna cost you two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to demo, he emails that to you, fine. A septic guy, it's gonna cost you thirty thousand dollars to put a septic system in there, you got that. A contractor, yep, probably three hundred thousand dollars to build a three-bedroom, two-bath house, which is pretty normal. Okay, so now we're up to almost a million, that's your numbers right there. You know, and then you would say that the market nowadays for a house is maybe two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars to sell, you're then out five hundred thousand dollars, yeah. So I can work with you on that off outside this meeting.
Chris will help you out.
Okay.
Okay, so, once you get all this, the name part of this adjusted, we'll have to table this for the next.
We motion to table pending the additional information that we need.
I need a motion to table application, uh, two-two-three-zero-three area variance and application, uh, it's seven-zero-zero-zero-one, a use variance to. a use variance for Baptiste, guess his name there? Kissinger?
Yeah, we'll fix that.
Well, yeah, that'll be fixed. For the, let's see, what's this called? Probably the old border station. Should we refer to it as that, since it's what it is?
It probably needs to be clarified, yeah, for sure. It's part of the whole application.
Yeah.
Who the applicant is, if it's the old border station LLC, that's fine.
Okay, I need a motion?
It owns the land.
Yeah, technically, I think it should probably be the applicant.
And can I get a second?
One second.
Okay, Matt, Matthew, Kevin?
Yeah.
Bruce?
Yes.
Natasha?
Yes.
I say yes. So, next, we need to schedule, we need a motion to schedule this onto the next month's meeting.
If you, seventeen?
The seventeenth of August. Can I get a motion to table it to that date?
If he gets the information to us.
Huh?
If he gets the information to us.
Well, I mean, we have to make that the goal, right? Okay, second?
Seventeenth of August?
Yes, five-thirty.
So, you'll have to make sure you try and get all that into Chris before the seventeenth, which is the next meeting that we'll have in place to discuss your project, okay? Oh, yeah, and I'll have a roll call. Matt?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yeah.
Natasha?
Yes.
And yes, me. Is there any other business before the zoning board? All right, then I need a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Matt?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yeah.
Natasha?
Yes.
And yes.